Okay, so I'd like to call Dover Select Board meeting to order on Tuesday, July 20th, at 6:36. We are sorry for the delay. We have had a few technical difficulties moving back to the town office, but I'm sure that hopefully people can hear us. Jeanette, would you raise your hand if you cannot hear us, if you're virtual?
No.
Jordan's thumbs up. Okay, thank you. So if you want to say something virtually, please raise your hand, either your hand or the hand icon, and Jeanette will let me know somebody wants to speak. All right, public comments. I have one public comment. We had a dog bite in town on Friday that has now required hospitalization for infection. We want to make sure that if people are being bit by dogs, that they report it, so that we can stop reoccurrences from happening. And that's really important, because otherwise we can't control, help control, and our neighborhood safe. And so, please, anybody who has an encounter with a dog where there's bodily harm, please report it. It's really important.
The Dover Police, but they may also file a complaint that goes to the select board. So there are two options for reporting.
So Tanna just added that you can go to the Dover Police, but you can also file a written complaint that will come to Dover Select. Anybody else have any other public comments? I don't hear any others. So we're going to talk to Travis at the Highway Department about the Blue Brook Road halfway trail erosion update.
Yes, I met with Mark at 18 Blue Brook Wednesday, Thursday last week, after meeting. After looking at the road, it was on the lower section that Tim Snow had fixed up. It wasn't upon some of the trail parts, so we should leave that aside. But I found that it was just a ridge that then left from filing and had been leveled over, and it ran all the way down that ridge, dodged off right onto the back of his property. Since then, I have got to hold the tip snow, and he's gone up and smoothed it out with his bucket loader, and I'm just going to keep an eye on it for now. I don't, I don't see any mooch.
Well, we certainly have had rain since then.
We've had a lot of rain, all month long, three weeks of it. So, yeah, you're going to have water, but...
And how is the homeowner's situation?
I haven't not touched his back yet.
So maybe, okay, so maybe you need to sort the back. Does anybody have any questions about that? Yes, actually, Mark, that basically is me. He asked his hand up.
Mark?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
I would. I would. I was there. I didn't see any bucket load.
Hold on a second. We've got a... It looks like we're getting an audio issue. Hold on, Mark, one second.
Can you hear me?
No, just barely. So just hold on a second.
Yes.
Ah, we can now hear you. Thank you.
That's too bad. I would, first of all, I was there. I didn't see anyone doing any bucket loader work. I was there the whole week. What I saw was somebody who drove, it looks like somebody drove a truck, had two grooves with a tire track, and the existing groove is still there. What are, I actually went up there with a rake to try to get some of the, out of that existing groove. And my opinion, the road is still pitched towards my house. It's not pitched, it's not flat, it's not crowned in the middle. It's, if you look at the higher end of that trail, it's pitched towards the culvert, and as it comes down, it's pitched towards my house. And if I look at my neighbors below me, there's a whole berm along the side of the trail parts. So, I mean, there was no, I mean, the only work I, the only thing I saw was the guy, somebody cut two, it looks like somebody drove a truck with a tire track to get the road, the water to come in my property sooner.
Up above, yes. I had done that a couple days after we had talked on Friday during the rain. Tim has then since been there with, with a bucket loader this week, and backdragged and smoothed everything up. I did saw, I did see where you came out and raked that little swale where it was washing over. That's all smoothed up now.
I guess I'll wait till I go, I'm not there now, so when I go back, I'll see, because we left on Sunday, so if he did it yesterday, it was...
Yeah, yeah, it's been done since then.
Okay.
And I'll continue to monitor it.
So Travis is going to continue to monitor it as we have these torrential downpours and see where we go from there. But next time you're up, maybe, you know, if you have any issues, call the Highway Department.
Yeah, Travis, can you send, I asked for your number. I don't think I ever got your number, so I have no way to reach you. Email address or anything?
Email.
Email.
It's on the website, or you can...
It's on the website, but they all find it.
Highway@doververmont.com.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good day, guys. I'll stop bothering you now.
No, no bother.
It's fine.
Okay, what's that reverb, Dan?
I just got a message. There's a severe echo on, on the people online. I don't know if we, is that...
We must be catching too many...
No, that is, that speaker is turned off. Let me force this mic off to make sure. Hold on a second. Hang on.
So am I just saying that the only person on is Shannon, really, right now?
Shannon Paul Fisher is the name?
Oh, I see Paul, okay. I don't see Paul, but I see Paul's name.
Yeah, I've done it. It was on. It was by Mark.
Okay, so if you, whoever you heard that from, probably Shannon. How was that, Shannon?
It's very weird.
Good.
Is it less weird now?
A little bit, yeah. I don't know if it was maybe on his side too, but when he was speaking, there was a back, like a hum and an echo, and it was very, it was weird.
So let us continue and see how it goes. Let us know if it gets bad again. Okay. Thank you, Travis, for that. And we were going to consider new pickup quotes that Travis had, has provided to us for a new pickup. So talk to us, Travis.
Okay. So I went into this looking to see what's out there, obviously, because there are companies right now, especially diesel pickups. So I offered my options to a crew cab pickup as well, to, you know, because I thought it'd be handy to have all my gear in the truck and everything else. And I just, contrary to my email to Dan, I've since changed my mind on the pickup. I'd like to get the Auto Mall regular cab pickup, just because 90% of the time, it is just me out there checking roads, and I can make do with my gear either bringing it with me or having it back at the office. I did originally come here, you know, in seek of the crew cab, but I think that, I don't think the town should have to give up $27,000, just so I can keep my stuff inside.
Well, you do get a longer bed with the...
I can get a longer bed, and my fuel tank's going to be in the back, yes.
So do we have to order this? Is this sitting on the lot?
No, they have it.
They have it?
Yes, they have it, and they are, they're a Boss Snowplow dealer. The other trucks, I would have to get the truck and then bring it someplace to have the plow put on. It'll all just come as one package from Auto Mall.
So this quote from Auto Mall includes the snowplow package?
Yes, it does, yep, everything. Yep. I think, oh, sorry.
No, no.
I also explored options as to, was brought up to me before about selling it outright. I talked to Wilmington and a few other towns, and they had good luck with an auction site where the buyer pays everything. But I did some research on that auction site, and what we're getting in trade from our dealership is the same as what they're getting for the pickups, selling at auction or bidding process or what have you, so.
Okay, so Travis is proposing to purchase the Auto Mall Chevy GMC pickup for $64,595. They're going to give us a $30,000 trade-in value for it, a net difference of $34,595. We had budgeted in the capital equipment plan for $50,000 expenditure. So it's coming in under budget. It is the least expensive option.
It is.
And does anybody have any other comments about that? Would somebody like to make a motion to purchase the said pickup truck?
I move that we've authorized Travis to purchase the Auto Mall Chevy GMC pickup truck for $34,595 after trade-in.
Second. Any other comments?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you can take us. Thank you, Travis. Unfinished business. Do we have an update on the library sign?
Um, no.
Can we get one for the third?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to put you back on that for Scott. Okay, we're going to revisit the office, the personnel policies, and of note, conflict of interest and nepotism. So Jeanette provided us with model policies, guidelines, and did everybody have a chance to look at all that information?
I did.
And does anybody want to start where they, they think, what they think?
I have some problems with this. Page six refers to, it says, "applies to full and hard-time employees except by written, separate agreement."
Hey, Sarah, can you speak up like here?
Okay, so the bottom of page six...
Of which document?
Of, it's the VLCT Model Personnel Policies, the 37-page document.
Yes.
It excludes members of town boards and commissions, volunteers, seasonal employees, and persons who provide the county services on a contract basis. And I'm not sure we want to exclude all those people.
No, and I actually saw that as well, and that's why I liked looking at the model policy that was provided, particularly pages seven and, seven, eight, and 10, which are conflict of interest and their nepotism policy. So the nepotism policy basically says, "The town in recognition of potential, of the potential for conflict of interest to occur in the workplace where a close relative is responsible for supervising or evaluating the work performance of another close relative. Prohibits the hiring or transferring of relatives. When doing so will result in close relatives supervising or evaluating another close relative, or close relatives supervising or evaluating the immediate supervision of another close relative. A close relative includes spouse, civil union partner, romantic cohabitant, parent, step-parent, grandparent, child, stepchild, grandchild, sibling, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, parent-in-law, or similarly-in-law." So that's pretty short and sweet, and I'm not, and we're not going to try to adopt anything tonight. We want to make sure that everybody who would be affected by this should get a copy, you know, everybody should have a chance to weigh in. But that, that's short and sweet, and the conflict of interest policy is a little bit more, I'm not going to read it because it's longer, but it's also a little bit more in depth. So it basically says what, what a conflict is, and so anyway. I don't know what other people's comments from the board are on this. I don't think it's, you know, you guys, nobody who's an employee has had this opportunity to look at this. It also, I feel, would be for boards and commissions and who at committees and whatever else we have and have the town is operating. Jeanette, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we, well, I was thinking taking those two sections that they, and submitting them both into our personnel policy, so that it's all one, instead of three different policies for...
Yeah. So if you could provide each department head with, with this information, so that they can share it with their employees?
I know Randy has it already.
Yes, Randy.
So, yeah, she did send it to me. I did send this out to my staff, said, "Let me know." I said, "I highly doubt the board was going to make any recommendations tonight because of, you know, short notice and long." You want my opinion right now?
Why don't you, you've seen it, but most of the other people haven't. We will definitely have this come back. I think that there should, at this point, also be some, you know, I don't know if we have any grandfathering situations that we need to consider as well, effective as of a certain date. So that's the kind of thing that every department should consider and think about it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not married to it. That's pretty short and sweet, but...
Yeah, and my only thought, and I'll say it later on, is, is I would agree with that. The only thing is, I can come up with a scenario that I would not totally agree with that.
And that's fine. We want to hear those. Absolutely. But versus having a long, and it really, it should be clearly stated also that this is not just for employees, it's for board members and others as well.
I, I feel like the nepotism section's a little skinny. There's some things that, there's more than just supervising or evaluating work performance where nepotism could come into play. And I want to take a swing at maybe adding some language there.
So when we bring this back, and I'm not sure, depending on our agenda for the third, which might be pretty long, we may have to bring it back the second meeting of, that gives everybody a chance to form their, and put their ideas to it. As I said, I think it's just a place to start, and we'll go from there. Does everybody like that? All right. All right, thank you. Yes?
No, I was just gonna, sorry. I mean, I haven't thought out different scenarios. I haven't been like going on different scenarios where this might not work, but I do think that it being short and sweet and to the point, there is something that's nice about that, because there's going to be a million different scenarios. We can't craft it all up, and it's a little bit open to, you know, each situation. So short and sweet, it's there.
Well, my only point with that was that it only covers supervising a family member or someone, and I think that there are other instances beyond supervision where we want to talk about.
Okay, so you expound on that?
That's, that's what I meant by expanding, not just adding more words with...
Randy will, no, I know, deal with his and anybody else. And this is, this is for the betterment of the town and for everybody. So let's, let's make sure everybody has a chance to voice on this. Fair enough? Thank you, Jeanette, for providing all that information. Okay, now we're going to have some fun. We're going to talk about the PFAS at the landfill. PFAS don't seem to be going away, and...
It's a subject that's been reflected.
Wow.
That was probably me that I needed, so I could...
So as everybody probably has heard, there has been some level of PFAS detected at the landfill. And we have a proposal from KAS, who's also doing the daycare town hall site, to do some testing, but some adjoining properties. The price tag on this, just for the testing, this isn't anything beyond, you know, figuring out the plan to do the testing and do the testing and having the laboratory analysis, is $4,009.65. Good thing we're getting some grant money. Yes.
Are there any grants for this?
Good thing we're getting some grant money. Yes.
I was just going to say Rebecca Tree from KAS is that telephone number there.
Okay.
She is on, if you had any questions, you wanted to direct her.
Rebecca, do you want to add anything to this quickie summary I just gave?
No, I think you've covered it just fine. I'm sorry to present this news to the board. Obviously, we had hoped for lower concentrations in the recent landfill testing, but that just didn't come to fruition. So to, you know, protect the, be protective of neighboring drinking water supplies, you know, this, it's a routine request from the state to, you know, take some samples and, you know, see where we're at in that regard. And then as far as the cost, I know that it's a little bit of a sticker shock, but unfortunately, PFAS is just not, it's a, it's a compound or a set of compounds, and it's just very expensive for, for the laboratory costs. And I broke that out, and it's a proposal to present that to the town to make sure that, you know, everyone understands this is not just going out and sampling for the routine, you know, small things that we typically do at the landfill. But besides that, I think it, you think you, you know, you hit it right on the bullet.
In fact, these samples are going to have to be sent to Wisconsin for testing. So it's not, as she said, not a routine type. But it's, I bet it's going to become more routine as every site potentially has some of this. Yes, there should be some, some of the grant, we have money that will be coming in that is focused on...
This, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this program, the art money that's coming through from municipalities should cover a project such as this one.
Yes, Dan.
Is it a statewide problem, or is it just us?
It's a national problem.
Yes. So money coming from the state and federal government?
State. It's through the state, from the federal.
Thank you.
So I don't see that we have any choice in hiring, and I mean, we, in choice in doing this testing. And I propose that we, KAS has worked well for us, and they are very responsive. And I know that they try to keep the cost down as much as possible. Yes?
Do we have anticipated additional expenses after the testing is done, or is that, is that something that's unknowable?
Rebecca?
Sorry, Rebecca.
Yeah, I know, sorry. You know, I, we're obviously going to hope for the best. The concentrations of the landfill, they're not, you know, absorbently high. But, you know, we've seen similar concentrations at another landfill, in the, in the landfill wells where we did have exceedances in private drinking water supplies on a decent property. So I just want to, you know, I don't want to, I'm hopeful, but, you know, there is a possibility that we might have some concentrations on a decent properties that are, are elevated. And if that is the case, then we'll have to remedy, remedy that. And the most frequent way we do that is installing a fairly simple, it's called a point of, point of entry treatment system. But, you know, the, the cost for that, obviously, we can, we can tackle that when we get there. I don't, I don't want to go get too far ahead and, you know, I just don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. But, you know, those, those type of treatment systems, you know, they're in the thousands.
Yeah. So as we've, we're seeing, like, the common, obviously, we have to move to another level with that because of the, that it services a daycare. And so hopefully, we won't have that problem, but I think we need to have the testing done. So is somebody going to make a motion to hire KAS to do this testing for us?
I make a motion that we hire KAS to conduct the private well sampling and testing as outlined in their letter of July 19th.
A second.
Dan, seconds. Any discussion from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca.
Yep, no problem. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Aye. New business. We have a discussed water study with Rich Warner.
I think you just discussed it. Can I stay here, or do you want me up there?
I think you're, you're fine there, because people can see you in the audience.
It's a very comfortable chair that Eric wants to use. Thank you. You're welcome. So anyways, and I talked, you know, when I first became fire chief in West Dover, whenever, 2004, '05, '06, somewhere back then, President Obama was coming into office, and there was lots of Obama money going around. So we talked, you know, I went to the select board at that time, and I don't think any of you were here at that time, but we talked about doing a water study, and we get actually commissioned, and we got a grant from the state, loan interest that we could pay back over a lot of years, to do a study to see if we could put in a water system into the town. It's not the first one that's been done back when Tom Colman was developing out in Park. They actually put a group together looking to put in a fire hydrant system through the town, because as you may or may not know, you know, to build the cinema, you need a sprinkler system. To have a sprinkler system, you need a lot of water, and you need a way to pressurize and deliver it. They actually had Mount Snow, the plumber, LeBlanc, LeBlanc, Bob, that one, you know, had actually, they actually had done a pretty decent study. Bobby Edwards was in charge of it, he was doing public safety at that time. And they looked at it, and it didn't, you know, it didn't look unmanageable, but at that time, there was no buy-in from anybody other than Tom Colman, so he built it on and put a pump in the basement and dealt with it on his own. You know, fast forward a few years, you've seen a lot of growth, and you've seen a lot of development. Mount Snow was working on their, their master plan, and if you remember, there's supposed to be four or five pretty massive buildings up around the Corinthia Base Lodge that were going to be like apartments and rentals and kind of a semi-grand summit. And they were developing a water supply. And so there was a couple things, three things that worked out really well. One of the first things I did as a fire chief, the state of Vermont came down to Mount Snow Village and was chastising them, because Mount Snow Village, for 20-some-odd years, has a public water system that's private to Mount Snow Village. And they, the rules had changed over the years, and they tried really hard to keep up with stuff, but they weren't able to do that, because the rules came in at one time, you could use a drinking water system for fire protection. And they had a stand pipe that goes into the water tank, and then the state didn't like that. And there was a big argument over whether they could keep that. And the president of the association up there at that time was an engineer, and he's shown all this document. And I just, I never forget, the head of A&R was just like very abrasive to the person, put him down a lot, and said, "You don't understand. This is what you have to do." And they're like, "Well, we have a letter here saying this is what we can do." And it got really ugly. I said something. I said, "You know, this is why a lot of people don't feel that Vermont is very, very helpful, because you're not helping them at all. All you're doing is slamming the guy." And there was a gentleman at the time, Tim Raymond, that was there from the state, and after he came up to me and said, you know, "There is, there is some recognition in the, in the state that Vermont, that Dover, you know, has a pretty decent offer, but there's a lot of issues because it's not managed well." And he said that there definitely needs some grant money available or some money, a loan available, if you want to do a water study to try to, you know, mitigate a lot of these situations. So I brought it to the select board, and one thing that interested me a lot was Vermont's the only state that if you take federal water money and use it to develop a water system, you are allowed to add fire hydrants to it. And, you know, one of my concerns has always been, you know, there's not a lot of, not a lot of hydrants along Vermont 100. There isn't bad on Handle Road, and Mount Snow's pretty well covered. And John Mulholland really pushed a lot of developments to have, you know, pressurized hydrants in water systems. But they're also very expensive, and they're expensive to maintain. So we did do the water study. We, we did a study to involve almost the entire of West Dover, including Dover Hills. And, you know, it was a pretty high price tag, and that was probably 10 years ago, 11 years ago, that it was brought to the, to the town. And there was a lot of, a lot of different discussions going around, but it was, it was kind of sticker shock. And I felt that it was, it made a lot of sense, because I think about the development you have in town today, if in the late '60s and early '70s, you didn't have those people that had the foresight to do the sewer district and North France Fire District. You know, we wouldn't have half, a third, a quarter of development that we have today. There wouldn't be enough sewage. But the other But the other problem is, is we are now starting to see, there's people in Dover Hills. You hear stories, you know, their well is fine all year long and then they come up, you know, President's Week and they have no water and the well drill comes up and their well, you know, their, their well pump is 100 feet from water because we drain the aquifer so much. You know, Chris, President Weeks, Christmas Week, Martin Luther Weekend, you know, we have at 4:00. Everybody is there, you know, but they're a little strong. The aquifer is sucking as hard as it can. You go back prior to that study, you know, Antirons had a huge issue with water. They used to run midnight shift because there wasn't enough water there to, to do laundry. I have a customer up in Deer Meadow who built their house in the early 80s. They had 50 gallons a minute when they built. This past year, they came up and said, "Oh, we have no water." We went, it seems like a road pump. There's no water coming out of the well. Oh, there was no water in his well. So he wound up, you know, he had a 100-foot deep well. Now he had to go to 300 feet. He had a hydro frack and, you know, we've got like a gallon a minute, which isn't bad, but it's not great. Some people punch holes in the ground, you know, I, I got 50 gallons a minute at 100 feet. My mom, just up the road, you know, gets 400 a minute at 400 feet. So it's, it's very variable around there. And one of the things that the study shows is that, that we don't do a good job managing the system. The other problem is labor and industry, the fire marshal's office, their rules keep changing. So 20 years ago, I don't, just people remember when the big fire happened at the nightclub in Rhode Island. And, you know, so they, every four to six years, they rewrite the rules. And because of that, they said, "Okay, now we want sprinkler buildings that need speed." You know, Eric and I can get some money from Dover Economic Development. We can start a nightclub. And, you know, 10 years ago, we could have put 300 people in there and been fine. Now we would be required to sprinkle that building. And the occupancy levels seem to drop every so many years. And when something, you know, bad happens, you know, a lot of times we have new rules and laws because of a lot of loss of life. If I was to buy a building that existed and try to do some, something like that, a nightclub or dancing, I would have to.
No, no. Keep going.
Oh, so anyways, it would, you know, it's an expense without a, some type of community water system. You know, you would have to put in a, a, some type of holding place for water. You'd have to put in your own pump and you'd have to, you know, put in standby generation in case, you know, the power goes out. So when Costello, you know, gave up Deacons and Mike Carino came in, he spent close to $150,000 on sprinkler system because there was no public water system. He had a section off a part of the basement, filled it full of water, you know, put all the pumps in. So he would have spent 30, 40,000 to sprinkle the building anyways. But, you know, he has to spend all that extra money and then he has to maintain it.
Okay, I think we, we understand the problem and, and particularly, I mean, I was on, I was on the board when we had to start making payments back for the water study because we didn't implement. So I'm, I'm well aware and, and I know Donna Bono tried to get the, it going again. Tried to get some traction with some of the condominium developments, Mount Snow. So where do we go from here?
Well, my thought is, is that there's a lot of federal monies coming down. And I think that there may be some money to help offset the possible water system. When we looked at it before, you know, we were going to wind up paying the lion's share of it. I don't know, you know, Eric seems to know a lot about all federal monies, so it's useless. There, we, I don't know what that can do for us. It needs somebody to champion it. It needs somebody who can spend the time and see what's available out there. It needs somebody to talk to the different associations, see if they're interested in joining. It needs the people on the village, you know, do they want to have fire protection along with, you know, not having to worry about their well, when the well pump goes. I'm not sure who that person is. I can guarantee it's not me. But I don't know if there's somebody in the town who'd have interest in doing that. But I think it may be a good time to at least start looking forward. All that work we did back in the other week is still valuable information. A lot of it can be updated fairly quickly. I don't know how we advance it. I don't know, I know the select board would need to be very much behind it because last time the select board, you know, I asked Donna Bono if there was something you would champion and move forward. And I remember Don called me up one night and said, "The select board cut my legs out from under me." He said, "It was not pretty and, you know, it was the end of it." I, there was, there's nobody else I could think of that, you know, maybe could bring forward. I didn't know if the select board had any ideas. I made some suggestions that, you know, to the board during my evaluation processes. And, you know, the board did not think that was appropriate, people to do it. But again, it's, I don't know. I don't know, you know, I don't want to help me out to get it going, but I don't know. I'm not, I can't move it forward.
Okay, well, we have a lot of new people in town. Maybe somebody is, knows something about this. Rich had asked us for the economic development department to take this on and the board's at, there is not time in their day to do this. This, this is a, a good chunk of their, this is going to take a lot of effort to try to, because we will not be successful if we cannot get the big developments, Mount Snow and everybody in this watershed involved and, and make it, make it something that happens. This is, this is, it's a, it's a problem. I completely concur. There is a big problem. I don't know how to get it off the ground. Maybe we just hire somebody to do that. We need to find out about what, what grant money might be available. Obviously, we have a plan because we did the study.
So unfortunately, firmly hired to do the study, the owner of that firm wound up retiring. And he's no longer in that firm. He did, a bunch of his people went toward him. He made an arrangement to move some accounts over. And the gentleman who worked for them, and I'm going to draw a blank on his name. I do know went to another engineering firm and he's still doing things like the water system. The other one that tried to get it going again at one point, a few years ago, was Efrain, who was, you know, his father did the sewer plant back in the 60s. And he had a meeting with a bunch of developers and there was a, some developers that just didn't think it was appropriate. But I think that would be the way to go, is to, is to have an engineer who specializes, who's worked hard, to be able to move this forward and deal, and work with the public and work with developments. And I would be more than happy, because I think I can do that, is ask for two or three of them, maybe make a proposal or come down and talk to us about it and see if I can invite some of the, the management companies and some developers in town, maybe a representative from the fire district and the select board to get together. If I had permission to do that or at least had your blessing to do that, I would definitely be able to move that much forward and see where we go from there. That's the only idea I came up with.
Does anybody have anything to add? Dan?
Besides the amount of water, we also have a problem with quality of water. As you know, the terrible amount of iron I have, I run through five coffee machines at $3,000 each because they can't be repaired unless there's that much iron. And municipal water system is a way of solving that, at least in other places I've been.
Yeah, I mean, with another hat on, I can tell you that, you know, I, one of the things that Tim Raymond had told me was that what the state recognizes is, I think we have more independent private water systems, you know, public, private water systems than anywhere else in the state. And it creates a lot of issues because, like you guys are talking about with PFAS testing. You know, as an example, there's one place in town that had high uranium. So they said, "Oh, well, we better start testing all the wells around it." So all the water systems got a call from the state saying, "Oh, we're not going to mandate we test for free uranium." And lo and behold, two or three other systems wind up having high uranium. Now, when they do their, their sanitary surveys, we, we have to test, if you haven't had it recently, you have to test for uranium and arsenic. You know, it's not a lot, but it's a $150 testing. The PFAS stuff, like you're talking about, I, I'm not sure I've heard before that. I really wasn't paying attention. But I know those tests cost us $500 just for the test, you know, and we do, we ship it to our lab and the lab sends it to wherever. It takes a lot to come back. If you have one water system and one water supply, you do one PFAS test on the, the source because you're not worried about the wells at the landfill because you're not using them or where, whatever's outside the district. So there is some of that. And again, iron and manganese used to be a secondary product. It didn't matter how high it was. It was more of a nuisance. Well, now the state of Vermont is, the feds don't even do it, but the state of Vermont's more restricted. So they set a very, a much lower level for action with iron and manganese. So if your water has such high iron and manganese, they mandate treatment. I know one treatment system we set up was over $100,000 for 15 houses. You know, that same treatment system would probably treat the entire town. It'd be the same amount of money, but it's spread out over a bigger group.
And, and to be clear, this probably is only in the North Branch Fire District area that would begin. This would not go to Eastover. No.
No, the, the system, the system, we asked for the design because it was not that much more. They designed the entire North Branch District. So basically, the system was some wells that filled up some big tanks up on Mount Snow. And with the elevation where the tanks are at Mount Snow, you didn't have any pumps. It was a pressurized system. So even if the power went out, all you have to do is supply enough power to get the water from the well into the tanks. And the system, you know, it's a gravity fed system.
Yes, Dan.
Is there, obviously, because of the lead and the water in Michigan and stuff, there's a big deal. Is there a lobby for this? I mean, a lobbyist? I mean, is there, if you put a group together, would there be somebody to lobby, you know, to find out?
Well, there's, there's water, there's, there's a couple of private, like, you know, you have BLCT for select board. There are, there's a, a rural water association that works with small systems. And they also work with municipalities. The state has a lot of, like, you guys can get a grant to test for PFAS. I can't get a test for my association's, a grant to test for PFAS. That's, you know, paid for by the associations.
Well, I don't think we normally get grants. We just have money coming in now in this particular time.
Yes.
No, they're, like, the schools got a lot of money from the state to test for lead.
But the mitigation?
Well, we also got, the schools got money for mitigation, to mitigate lead and the, and the drinking, and lead. So, you know, and municipalities are eligible for grants. You know, we can apply, we have two water systems this year that are looking at $150,000 upgrades. And, you know, there's a revolving loan fund that they've applied for through the state. And, but it's because you have to show that you, you're in such need. But again, instead of one application, now we've got two to, you know, where if it was, if they got together, there could be one system that would just be doing.
I, I don't know. I, I mean, your idea is, is as good as I've heard myself. The buy-in is critical and the buy-in just wasn't there the last time.
I don't disagree.
And Mount Snow's got to be a big part of that too. So.
Well, and the developments.
And the developments, absolutely. They absolutely do. So what does the board think? To Rich, think about doing what he proposed and start. I really think, as Rich says, we need a champion for this. Somebody who really want, is, is invested in it and really wants to try to make it happen because it's a lot of hard work. This is, this is, this is, even if you get that champion, it's going to take years to make this happen. And, but if we don't start, we won't ever start.
But the other thing is, I, I do know that a lot of these, the federal funds that are coming down for relief don't have to be spent near one. They can be spent up to four or five years out. So, and again, one other quick thing, just when we hired the last engineering group, it was very interesting. I was leaning towards one engineer and the committee leaned towards another one. And one of the things was, you know, who do you think would have the most appeal to stand up in front of a town meeting and say, "This is why we're suggesting this and this is what we need." And that was something that we really looked forward to. And part of the deal with that firm was they brought in a person who specialized in presenting, you know, these kind of projects to municipalities and for, you know, town-wide votes. So there are firms out there that do specialize in that too. And it's not that I want to sell it. I just think we should give it a fair shake.
Yep. And I think the opportunity to potentially get federal grants that were unheard of in the past is, is potentially out there. And so we should, and Eric, you just gave me the cringe. Like, if this new infrastructure bill goes in?
Yeah, absolutely. There, there's not a lot of, like, fine details on what's going to be included, right? So we don't know yet. The only thing out right now that's even mentioned, like water or, like water infrastructure improvements, was this art money, which we've already kind of dog earred for PFAS on the school.
Well, and it's, it's much, nowhere near.
It's much smaller.
Right, right, exactly.
So I think we just need to be diligent also to follow this, which probably the economic development department will probably be able to assist in that. But I don't, I don't think that they're the people who can, they're not engineers. They don't know, you know, and they're not prepared to go sell it to, to everybody. Yes, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, we get updates daily on things that are coming through. So I, I have no problem keeping an eye out and letting you know, hey, this is coming through the pipe. And even if it's, you know, coordinated, if it has to be municipality-based, like figuring out how we coordinate getting that money. But in terms of us taking the whole project on, that's just, it's not a good question.
But I also think too, it is going to require the expenditures of money because, you know, an engineering firm is going to, they'll come down and meet with us once.
I know.
Yeah, so.
I know. But if we, so let's, let's see. I think that we have a plan, an RFP. It doesn't cost a lot of money to try to get proposals in?
Well, I, what I would like to do before that is I'd like to have two or three groups come down and say to them, "This is our issue. This is what we have. Well, how would you present to us that you can move this forward?"
Okay.
And what are you going to do and what is it? I, I don't think.
So are you, those groups would be engineering firms?
Yes.
Yes, with, with the public outreach portion of it.
Well, we would make sure that's part of it. We would ask it. Could, can we ask one, I don't know.
Sarah?
I was just going to ask, wouldn't that be what we would stipulate in an RFP?
Yeah.
Instead of them coming down and then us writing the RFP, write the RFP that would have some latitude in it for them to offer up their own suggestions. But we would start with, here's kind of the scope of what we're looking to do.
With the plans that we currently have.
Yeah. And then, and then hopefully get the two or three groups that would want to.
I would feel a little more comfortable in talking to a few firms first to, to put something together that makes sense because that's how we did the last one. We, we had input because we got the money from the state. We get input from the state. I don't know how we get input from the state, but I can definitely call Water Supply and ask them and see if maybe they have some thoughts. And again, I would like to talk to two or three different engineering firms that deal with a lot of water systems around here so that we can kind of get a leg up on what they think should be included and not before we put an RFP in and have a change here to come back to you guys.
I think that that's fair and if you want to do that. We do have to also invoke the law of the North Branch in this. Clearly, that this is going right over their overlay for a good part of the west side of, of the North Branch Fire District, you know, so.
The only other thing I would like to ask is if you could be, just so it's kind of out in public, if there is anybody that has a burning desire to deal with this or work on this, if they could maybe contact Jeanette or send an email to the fire department, you know, we'll, we'll get hold of them and, you know, involve them early on.
I think that's a great idea too. I actually think if they could send it to Jeanette and then we have one clearinghouse spot and she can send it off. So I think that's a good idea. No, thank you for bringing this. I, I think if we're going to do anything, we should seriously consider it now with the potential for federal money. So, thank you.
Thank you both for listening.
Uh, we're going to talk about consider setting the 2021 tax rate and whether we need to schedule a special meeting for that. I see Linda, is that Linda Sherman on? Okay. Marco?
Right, so I'm not really a call to action tonight, but I just wanted to put it on the radar that we're going to need to do something by the first week of August in order to give us time to get the tax bills out for it to be a 30-day window. The issue this year is the assessors have a 30-day extension because there are some reappraisals going on. And grievances will take place till the end of, till next week. So I think, looking at the calendar, I think if we do it at the next, probably more select board meeting, we should be okay. I think it's probably the soonest we can believe we could do it because grievances end Friday. So that would be us. So if that would be, uh, perfect.
Linda?
She's moving.
Can you hear me?
Yes, so did you hear what Marco just said?
No, the audio's really bad.
So he's hoping that we can set the tax rate at our first meeting in August, which I believe is August 3rd. Do you think that that's?
Okay. Actually, no, that's not going to work because I, grievance hearings end July 30th. And then from there, I have seven days to make my decisions and get my decisions out in the mail. So that would put it, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Seven business days or seven calendar days, Alinda?
I believe it's calendar days.
So August 6th, which would be Friday. We could, because Marco needs to have these tax bills in by basically the, Saturday, the 14th, right?
So we should have special meetings?
We will.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as, oh, sorry.
It, it takes a week to process the bills, to print them, stuff them, mail them.
I understand.
So we really don't have a lot of time.
So.
Yeah, but they can't get the tax bills out till.
So we really need to set the tax rate on Friday, the 6th.
Yeah, well, as soon as, as soon as I have my grievance decisions, I will have a number and I'll get it to Marco as soon as I can. That's the best I can do.
Okay. I mean, we really need to give people 30 days on their tax bills. Otherwise, then we're going to, otherwise, we're going to have to pull and push it off a couple of days, which we do not want to do.
Yeah, I don't even know if you can do that because while the electorate voted.
Voted September 15th.
September 15th, so I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So we're going to plan that we're going to meet sometime on Friday, the 6th.
Okay.
Okay? Everybody in here that, we need at least three members there? So, all right, is that, that, okay?
I really don't have a choice, so I think that's.
Yes, Jeanette?
Well, perhaps we could go back to the old days of stuffing them ourselves. I don't know.
That would save you time.
Okay. No, and that takes the time of the whole week for a lot of people within this office. Jeanette, you had something to say?
I just wondered what time that you were going to schedule, maybe on Friday.
Midday, sometime in the daytime, so that we can get as big a jump on things as we can. So maybe the morning, depending.
So we're not going to settle that tonight, we're just going to.
I, I don't know what time the, as soon as we know when the grant list has been lodged, we can do it. And I just want everybody to know, we're going to meet that day sometime.
Do we have to warn them?
Yes, of course.
If we need, if we can do it sooner, we'll.
Yes, let us know. And if, so if you get it, you know, Thursday night, then we can do it right off in the morning. Every day counts, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
We need to do two-day warning.
Yeah, we have to.
It can be.
24 hours if it's ever.
Well, it's pretty much, yeah.
Works that way.
All right, well, Linda, hopefully you can get those out as soon as possible, your decision. And we can get the tax bills out on time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we are going to look at oil bids. This year, we only received two bids. And we received bids from Cota and Nidos. And the Cota bid was for, and, and Jeanette had them, now they're bidding for a total lump sum of oil this year. So then if one building goes over, we don't pay extra on that one until we're all, you know, until the whole buy is over, then we pay more. It just seems like it makes more sense in terms of, why penalize it because we bought for one building? We have extra oil in another place, so. The Cota price is $128,586.4. The Nidos price is $127,385.95 because we have a $682.45 credit. So those are our options. Oil is expensive this year.
What's the price for that, maybe?
Uh, yes, $248 from Nidos for heating oil, $267 from Cota. Kerosene is $302 for Cota, $289 from Nidos. Summer diesel, $258 Cota, $250, $254 Nidos. $258 winter diesel from Cota, $274 for Nidos. Propane, $199 from Cota, $190 from Nidos. So. And Nidos is right here in town. Yes.
Yeah, and also they're all fixed, fixed prices from Nido, whereas Cota, Cota's a market price for the diesel and the kerosene, so it could be down, but.
So do we want to make a motion to accept one of these bids?
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Nidos for the heating oil, kerosene, diesel, and propane.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Economic Development Department, and we have a lot of stuff. Uh, for anybody who doesn't realize it, the pump track has been removed from the agenda, can I say?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
The school board decided, voted to, to, to give them some money last night.
Well, what happened was we were told we couldn't do it originally with the grant, but then we were able to swap some grants around.
And make a.
So we were able to get a grant funded, so.
Perfect.
We appreciate you guys looking and doing it for us, or if you think we got it covered now.
Great.
Thank you, Shannon.
So Shannon has provided us with a review, quarter, fourth quarter updates, which is pretty, the way I like it, pretty succinct. Anybody have any questions about that? Anything you want to point out to us, Shannon?
Um, no, just a couple of highlights, that the Village Center designations are back. So that was a huge project Eric completed this quarter, and we don't have to reapply for them until 2029.
Okay. Eric?
And just on the Village Centers, one of the biggest grants that we're looking at for Trails and Rec right now, the highest priority goes to towns who have either a designated downtown or a Village Center.
Excellent. Great. It was worth the hard work. Okay. Business competition documents provided by Eric.
So Sarah already went through, she's my grammar person, spelling person, so she went through and found some things for me and already sent those to me and updated them.
Yeah, I saw, I saw a couple of things, like, why is Wilmington Works in here?
Right, so I think we discussed this the first time we talked about it. They provided us all of the paperwork.
So it was just a change.
So it was nice that Sarah went through.
Yes. So we should be all set there. If there are any additional changes, you can just, you know, if it's grammar stuff.
I'm pretty sure that Sarah can.
But you can see in the rules that we would like to, right, these are the rules, that we would like to get this started, you know, as soon as on August 2nd for preliminary applications. So me putting this in front of you was to say, do these rules seem to cover the bases? Is this something you think we have to put in front of legal? Or can we kind of go with what we have?
So I'm guessing that Wilmington Works put theirs in front of legal? They did not, then we should put it in front of legal.
Okay.
We should. I just, and it's worth it, and I'm pretty sure that we can do it at Katie and Dugan.
Okay.
They're less expensive and that's, that, this would be fine. And just a, a once-over, make sure we've got all of our bases. I just.
No, I, I agree.
I think that's, it's worth just in case something is not right. And so you, if you get it in front of them, they'll probably get it back to you next week.
So if I, if I hear differently from Meg that it was run in front of legal?
Yeah, then that makes a difference, obviously.
Okay, okay.
You know, uh, because I think somebody, you didn't change it substantially.
No.
So, besides saying there will only be one winner.
There were some additions and changes just because, you know, having seen it happen down there, I think everybody knew what would have been done a little differently, so.
Yeah, I think that if theirs was run by, it's probably, and you didn't say, change anything.
Drastic.
Drastic, okay. But, so check on that.
Okay.
And is everybody assuming that that has been at least vetted somewhere, ready to go with this?
And the, the other part of this here, sorry, do you have to vote on that?
Um, I think we should vote on it because it just shows that the, the select board supported it and we're ready to go. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, how do we know it first? That we, we're a motion to approve the format of the Dover Business Plan Competition.
And guidelines.
Rules, guidelines, application, and scoring report. Subject to legal approval.
Yes. Anybody have any comments about this?
So if I get the legal approval from PRIS or if I get confirmation from Meg, we're going to go for this.
Yes. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Excellent, so also. Also with that, yeah, so we're moving right on. Okay, so Shannon and Eric have put their very best minds to thinking of a name of this program, which has been challenging, and they've asked for help. They, they've given us a list of about 15.
I added a couple.
So Sarah has added a couple to this list?
I sent it to Eric last night.
So did the board all look at these names?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I added homegrown Dover, Dover grown, or do it right in Dover.
One of the concerns, I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine.
One of the concerns we had about a lot of the names on this list, which was pointing out, pointed out to me by my lovely assistant, was that it sounds like a pot growing competition if we don't phrase it correctly.
Well, maybe that's what we'll get here.
Maybe. But I just, I, so I think we're trying to steer away from, like, the grown or.
How about, well, then do it right in Dover.
So my concern with do it at all confuses it with the do it program. Do it right, R-I-G-H-T is the way you wanted that?
Done right in Dover.
Done right in Dover. Done it, done it.
Done.
So, um, I told Eric I had a few favorites that I liked, and I don't know, if the other board members want to jump in? Yes.
I like Dover Launchpad.
That was one of my favorites as well.
Right.
Scott?
I, I like that, it's this lame, but the Dover Startup Challenge, it looks very clear, whatever. I don't think the name, I don't know, big deal about the name, I get it, bud.
Well, we, you know, the, the Make It On Main Street had a nice.
Yep.
Connotation to it, and I think we're, we're trying to.
Yeah, Make It On Main was a good name. Yes, Eric?
It'll be very clear that it is a Dover, like, a business plan competition. We're just looking for the, the catchy, you know, something that'll stick in your head.
Right.
Did you have a favorite, Sarah?
No.
Okay. Um, I also liked Pitch It in Dover. I thought that was pretty good.
If, like, if you did say you want to do it in Dover and it did have, and it did, like, it had a connection with the do it program, what's the problem with that?
I think it's just confusing to have one do it program and another do it program. And I don't think we, I mean, there's enough names on here that, I, I like do it, and that's why it was taken so early.
How about Done Right in Dover?
Done Right in Dover.
Get it?
Done, oh, right in Dover.
I like that.
What do you guys like? What do you guys like?
We like Dover, Dover Launch.
Dover Launch?
Yeah. But I'm not, I'm not against Dover Launchpad either. My, my only concern with Done Right is that it makes it seem like it wasn't done that way elsewhere. And I just, to me, I don't want that to be.
Like Launchpad.
I, I don't think that we're going to bring, I don't think we're bringing a whole lot to it. I think you guys make the decision. Is everybody okay with that? I don't think that we're really in a position to make that decision. But you, you, you kind of.
Yeah, there's nothing on the way.
No, no, you guys had, you can do it. Okay.
Perfect.
All right, so the next thing is the Trails and Rec Committee recommendations for renaming the Dover Town Forest.
Yay.
Okay, so this is the first recommendation to come out of the Trails and Recreation Group, which is a big deal because it took us a while to get there. Um, you have the names in front of you. I believe the one that was settled on by the majority of the group was the Dover Town Forest and Phil Bartlett Recreation Area. The reason we decided to make it so long is that we don't want to lose the branding that's already happened with the Dover Town Forest property, but we do want to also incorporate Phil in memoriam there because of his work to help us acquire said name, which is where the super long name comes from. But we would have a nice sign up there. Andy and I have had discussions about what that could possibly look like. We get to keep our town forest and do a great thing. So if you guys are happy with it, we'd like to.
We are happy with it, I think?
I think we're actually.
I see Sarah voted for it.
Yes, I did. I think we're actually talking about almost like two separate things. There's the Dover Town Forest, and within that is the Phil Bartlett Recreation Area.
I want to.
I would like to have a sign, you know, no, uh, have, have an, an event where this is, this happens and that we recognize it, and they, we have his family there, and we have the, but once a sign is right, is installed.
Yep.
I think that that would be a really nice event to have.
So I think the next step would be for us to get a sign together for you guys to look at to say, this is what we're thinking, and then once you approve it, we'll order, and then, you know, we can absolutely do that in a spare day.
Dan?
I like a plaque better than a sign.
Up under, under the snow?
If it's up high enough, you'll see.
Sarah?
I think what we, we need a sign that says that you're at the Dover Recreation, you know, the Dover Town Forest and Phil Bartlett Recreation Area, but another suggestion that was made was that there be a plaque that has a brief bio of Phil that talks about why he's, why it's being named for him and what his contribution to the town was. And that, so there'd actually be two separate kinds of signage there.
You could find a really nice boulder and put that on, you know.
Yeah.
Something that's not, you know, but that, that would be, and that would be really kind of in stone, you know?
Yeah.
You guys can work on that, but I think that we're excited that you're going to, you've come up with a good name.
Okay.
Everybody okay with it?
Yep.
Scott? Okay. Thank you. And finally, tonight, we have the Living History Association Program Funding Request.
That's Mr. Disavie is here to speak to you guys on behalf of this program. It'll be a nice year.
Yes.
We started this back in, in 2019 to try and create a self-guided historical and recreational driving tour with kiosks in the different towns and, and then a guide to take people from one place to another, but also to promote the general area. And it would be a guide that, its emphasis would not necessarily, although, would be distributed here locally, that would not be the emphasis. The emphasis would be to get it out into other places in order to try and bring more people here. So that's the gist of that. We had gotten some money from Ritzboro to do a kiosk down there. Then COVID hit and a bunch of things happened in there. We weren't able to, to advance the program forward. We did go before Wilmington at the middle to end of 2019, and they wanted a lot of different changes and whatnot than like the way we had to organize. So COVID gave us the opportunity to reorganize everything and, and we went to them with the idea of also combining it in with some events that we would do. And here, a week ago, they, they approved $5,100 for that, which I believe you've seen the paperwork on the budget on that. And, but it was contingent really upon what we were doing, so.
So is the kiosk installed in Ritzboro?
No, we stopped everything.
Do you have a diagram of the kiosks?
I can send you one, I don't have one tonight.
Okay.
I thought of that one, because I'm a bit of a. I thought of that one. I was driving up there.
And so there'd be a kiosk in Dover, one in Wilmington and one in Reedsboro?
What we're trying to do is we're trying to get between anywhere from two to five in each community, depending upon where the research takes us. And in Dover, in doing this, I found out I was in over my head really, really by myself. And so in Dover, I contacted Sue Newman and, um, she was talking about possibly bringing her international baccalaureate group into this and then also talking to the fifth, the new fifth grade teacher at the Dover Elementary School, which apparently she has done and that person, I don't have the person's name, but is interested in doing it. Um, so they're waiting on me to, to get something going.
So Jim, I, I would like to see the plan for the kiosk before we go with any promotional materials for this project. I don't know how the rest of the board is, but it's hard to, to, to do promotional materials if you don't know what you've got. Uh, and so if we could get placements, I mean, I, I think that, I think as, I think they're, the kiosks are a great idea.
The kiosks would come from a, a company called Panier. Um, you could look at them on the internet if you want. They've got a lot of these kiosks. But the ones that we were looking at were very national park type kiosks that are almost like a podium, but they sit a little lower than a podium. And they're basically the, the tech size would be the same size as opening up the Deerfield Valley News full, okay? And that would give you an idea of what size and script and body would be.
And you probably have an example of that that you could, um, you could send us an ad or something.
I have a, um, their advertisement basically that shows what it is and how it's put together. Um, the, the actual script and everything that goes inside it, um, is just that, it goes inside it. It's not actually part of the kiosk. It is a piece that where the kiosk can be opened up and slid in and then closed up and refaceted and so forth. And then if it, over time, it will eventually begin to fade and, you know, have weathering on it. So then it can be reopened, taken out and another one put in. So it's, it's quite, quite a neat thing.
Sarah?
Um, I'm having a very hard time without the visuals. So I really want to see, I want to see the kiosk. I want to see a map with the placement, suggested placement locations. And I want to see what other towns are, because if it's going to be, it's not going to hop from Reedsboro to Wilmington, right? You're going to come through. So I want to see what those other towns are contributing as well.
What I would be doing is, once we had the, the idea that we were going to do this, we can get a price break if we order more than one at once. So, um, that's also in my thinking. But what I wanted to have happen would be for Sue Newman and this fifth grade teacher to talk with the Dover Historical Society and come up with where those sites would be in Dover, I think.
I, I understand. What I'm saying is I want that to happen and then come to us to ask for them. I want.
The plan.
I want some, I want a more thorough, more understandable plan. I feel like this is kind of scattershot in a way. Like I, I'm not really clear how it's all coming together. And I would like to see something, I'd like to see a map. Even, I mean, I understand that things may move. You may find, you know, a property owner doesn't want the kiosk there for whatever reason. But that we have some sort of a, a more detailed plan with some visuals before we talk about.
The two sites that were originally mentioned was, was here in front of this building. Talking about the, the village here and also over at the, where the, the town hall is. I would imagine that there would be other locations than that. But I, I think you've got to see where the research goes and that's going to take time. That's.
Yeah, so we, we can't buy kiosks now because we don't know how many we're going to have to buy. Um, and I'm confused why we would need event banners because this doesn't sound like an event. Uh, it sounds like a, uh, ongoing thing.
Well, it is an ongoing thing and we were looking into an event largely because the way we had it originally organized and went to Wilmington with it was with getting a state grant, which we were not able to get. So we were asking the town to support that portion. They didn't want to do it that way, which would pay for employees to do a lot of this. So we went with volunteers and we went around and got, uh, Julie Moore down in Wilmington to, uh, to do the kiosk down there. Uh, talked to Sue Newman and she talked to this other teacher up here. Um, talked a little bit to the Historical Society about helping out. They seemed to be, um, enthused about it. So we've had to go in a very different direction and in order to do that, um, we're going to have to promote a large, or we're thinking about doing, and it's in the county status, is a pedal bike tour in the springtime and charge people a fee to enter that and use it as a fundraiser in order for us to supplement this whole program even more than what, uh, we're asking for. And the big thing we're asking for here, it's not even the kiosk. The big thing we're asking for is the guide. It's going to take people from one location to another. There are many locations already in a lot of the different communities. Whitey Hall is a tremendous number of markers. Reedsboro's got a few that already exist. Wilmington has four kiosks just out by the river that's already been done. It's all part of the park that's out there. Plus they've got the Molly Stark statue. They've got the picnic table out on Route 9 with the, the, uh, the obelisk out there for the Molly Stark Trail. So part of this was to tie all of that together in a publication. And that to me is the, well, it's twenty-five hundred dollars that's what we're asking.
So is this a rack card? Is it a big rack card?
It's going to be a newspaper format and we're going to seek advertising from the local people and businesses and whatnot to help support that and tie it into this event out here as well, to bring people here at the same time. It's, it's got a lot of pieces and parts to talk about with that.
Yeah, and I, I can't know that I can get my hands around all of this. I, I would like to see what the publication is going to look like. I mean, you said that you're going to mail it out to get people. We have people here who are looking for stuff to do. So it needs to be something easy and handy. And if you're going to go for a guide and see these things, it's got to be something that you can easily navigate in a car. So I'm not sure a newspaper is necessarily the best format for that. I just have a lot of questions about this because it's kind of all intermingled, the kiosk, the, the event and then the, the publication. Um, I also know that if Dover's going to support this, we're going to want to put our name on this and put our logo on this. And so I also would have to have our economic development people go through it, proofread it, make sure the formats are all good. And I don't think we're quite ready to do that kind of thing yet because the thing just is a little bit too.
And the publication we're talking about doing is the same one that we did similar to what we did when we did Celebration Times a couple of years ago. And it promoted the different historical societies and going from one town to the other. Actually, that's kind of where the idea originated.
Oh, I think, I think that the whole thing has some merit, Jim. I just think how you put it together is going to be really important. A lot of words, and you're a guy of a lot of words, isn't always the right way. Maybe color with glossy photographs. I don't know. But it, I think that we really, if you're going to do this and make it successful, it really needs to be a, that kind of format that people can easily use. So if you're driving, you're going around on your bike and you want to see this stuff, you, you're not going to carry a newspaper with you. I'm sorry, I, I produce newspapers and I just know that.
A QR code would be, you know, digital.
So I'm totally in for making some kiosks. I think that that's a great idea and pointing out things. And I think that somehow getting that all tied together is really important, but I'm just not, I personally am not ready to support this. Beyond the kiosks and I would need to have more information on those.
I feel like I need to see something. I need, I, um, the event almost seems like a completely separate thing from establishing the program. The event would then promote the program once the program is already created. I, I see those two things being conflated and I don't think that's, I mean, it's not up to me, you know, it's not my place to tell you how to do this, but in terms of the funding mechanism, are we, I, I feel more comfortable talking about creating and funding the program and then how you promote it is a separate, completely separate conversation. But for right now, I want to, I, I want to see what the kiosk looked like. I want to see how you want, how you want to do the materials for it. And I want to talk about, you know, how you're going to sell advertising. You may not need any money for that newspaper. You may be able to fund the entire thing with advertising.
That's possible.
So, you know, right, Vicki?
Oh.
I guess I'd probably better come from the town with this environment the way it exists today. At the present time, you know, things are pretty rough for a lot of businesses. Yeah, that's fine. We, we're not, we're not desperate for the money tonight. Matter of fact, this coming up as quickly as it did, it surprised me. As far as the, the kiosks go, I'll have something in the email probably tonight to, uh, to Janet.
But, but as Sarah was saying, we're, we're all, you're going to need to have some of that research flushed out and figure out what, where they're going to be and, and, and basically what you're going to have on them. Um, so that, that's the second piece of that.
So in, in reality, it gets better than, the, the thing for us to do is to determine the exact number of kiosks. And someone was going to go on each one, at least in theory, and get all of that funded, one-shot deal, I think. I think that's what you're talking about.
I, 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 I think getting the physical and the, and the historical information on it is important. And then we'll figure out how to, um, get the word out and, and get people moving along the trail.
Okay.
Okay, Scott?
And just a, a thought of, this might not work. So I don't know how much this app costs if it's like ten thousand and it's just not even. But if we're thinking about something that's easily accessible, because I'm all about the history stuff, you know, I think that's great. I'd love to have places and, and advocate to go see more historical places. But if there's something easy, like we're talking about, you know, whatever popped up on your phone and hey, sweet, you can go to these places and this places and it's part of like whatever. And they could click on you giving a little audio thing or saying, hey, this is why this is awesome because you're a source of awesome information and stuff like that. I don't know. I don't know if that would just crush all the advertisers and funding for that. I don't know. And I don't know if that's too high in the sky, like, ooh, this app that, I don't, I have no idea, but it would be cool. Just saying.
Dan?
I believe years ago, we put together the Scenic Route 100 and now we recommended that along the Valley Trail. We put some historical markers.
Uh, I don't remember that. I do know that we have on the, some of the trails, some, um, like arbor and some kind of, uh, you know, what you're looking at, whether you're.
Flori.
The pont, the florifana thing, yes. Um, we do have that.
Four Sound Trail has a bunch of those.
And it's very nice and people enjoy that. So, um, that's what we're looking for, Jim.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Consent agenda. We are going to approve the minutes of July 6th.
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you going to stay out?
No, wait. July 6th, that was.
Yeah. No, you weren't.
It was not July 6th.
Okay. And the warrants for July 10th for two hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. I, um, looked at them last week.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. You were.
Yes, so. Do you want, Scott, you have?
I moved the, uh, approved the warrants of July 10th. Twenty twenty-one for two thousand, uh, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six, fifty-five.
I'll second. Um, do you want to? Um, I mean, if you go through those, Scott, we'll probably be here for another twenty minutes.
Yeah, 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 that's all right.
All in favor? Aye. Um, we have FYIs. We have a bunch of concerts coming up. We have Erica Reynolds tomorrow night in the park. Group Profit on Sunday and Miss Paula and the Twangbusters on August 1st. Uh, also, we have a BCA meeting next Wednesday, the 28th, to look at the voter checklist. Um, and the Wyndham Regional Let, Plan Readoption Letter. And we did receive that. So basically, it's going to take effect if we don't do anything. And they just reaffirmed the Wyndham Regional, um, they made no changes to the previous one. So, uh, if I'm reading this correctly, we don't have to do anything. We just, we just let it become the new one for, um, that will be good till September twenty, twenty twenty? No. Nope, uh, the date, it's good for eight years, eight years from when it's adopted, so. Is there anything else that anybody wants to say before we go into an executive session with Richard Warner? Travis?
We have an issue here at this building Monday morning, first thing, found a water leak. Got it fixed immediately. I'm wondering if it isn't the issue with all the water we're getting inside the foundation under Marcos and Tabby's office.
And down into Linda's office?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that's.
Joe's on the phone?
Been a problem that's finally fixed.
Well, thank you for getting that.
Yeah, excellent.
Fixed so quickly. Uh, I know that it was, uh, it's stressful when you have a lot of water in the building. Uh, particularly with the auditors here and open for business and, so thank you. Um, thank you for getting that fixed.
It's all taken care of.
Good. Uh, Joe is connecting? Okay, well, it's hearing nothing else. Uh, we will go into executive session with Rich Warner. Hold on.
Thank you, Andy.
We have a, yeah, a motion. Sarah, you want to make a motion?
A motion to go into executive session at eight oh three PM.
Second.
What?
Eric's going on vacation starting like tomorrow or Thursday for a week, plus a week. Yes. Tomorrow.
It's still not acceptable.
Tomorrow for a week and a half. Good for you.
Okay, so Janet, if you stop recording.